Why is the food for the center? Are we ready? All right, it is 10:30 and we are here for our 10:31 and we're here for our Justice Service update. And with that, we'll turn over to Director Sols.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. First off, I'll introduce J.D. Storm. He's our liaison with the Department of Juvenile Corrections. He's actually based out of Lewiston, but he services both Region One and Region Two. Brian Donkey is our new District One Commissioner, and Asia Williams, she's been here for a few years now, but she's our District Two Commissioner. And Ron Horn is our new District Three Commissioner. So with that, I'll turn it over to J.D. He's got some paperwork for you and mostly statistical. Thank you. More of our staffs, kind of our report card to some degree on how we did over the last year. And J.D. does this annually, so for two of you, this will be your first year with getting to see this information. But anyway, I'll let J.D.
Okay, perfect. Do you want me to hold this? Sure. We'll just turn to that first page with where it says youth arrests. So this page reflects a breakdown of arrests and petitions for the past three years and the type of charge. So looking at those blue bars there, you can see in 2024, there were 83 youth arrests. That's down 38 compared to last year. The next spot over there, it says detention admissions. There was 12024, that's down 35 from 2023. And those are just Bonner County kids getting admitted into Ron's Detention Center. It doesn't count for all the kids maybe from other counties or other states.
Yeah, because we do have Boundary and Lincoln County kids that are that come in. So our overall bookings are more than that. That's just people on our county.
Yeah. And I think in just talking, talking with, talking to Ron, the kids that he's getting in detention, some of them are pretty high risk and.
You gotta have to do this one because they actually put yours up here. And that way, since it's online, you can slide through your slide deck.
I can go up here?
Yep. And then you don't have to hold that mic.
My earphone. All righty.
There you go. I thought it was odd that the front page was on that screen, so.
Oh, gotcha.
That way it's on, I think this is on Zoom and YouTube, and people can see what we're seeing.
Okay, gotcha. Now I'm gonna mess it up.
You're back to the beginning.
Yeah.
Just one click.
You probably.
Just tap.
It's semi-auto.
Now you guys got me all flustered. I might need, I might need some help.
All right.
It's all good. Just do what you need to do.
Yes, if you just.
Go back.
What did we do here? We got your.
Will the arrows work for advancing?
Yeah, let's just do that.
That's cleaner than the mouse usually.
So here, so just press right there.
Gotcha.
Unless like the.
Awesome, awesome. So I was talking about detention admissions and just talking to Ron and, and actually other, the other two detention centers in District One and Two. The kids that are coming to the detention, the numbers might be a little bit lower compared to past years, but the kind of kids that they're getting in there are pretty acute. You know, they require a lot of care, you know, a lot of self harm issues.
We've had probably more kids this last year that have been on suicide watch than we've ever had. We've had, we only have two observation cells, so that's normally where a kid who suicidal goes in. Put them on five minute watches or even sometimes just a constant eyes on watch. And this year, there have been several different times, well, in 2024, that we had to have put kids out on the floor in the pod so that we could do those checks just because those, the two observation cells were already full. At one, one point, we had five kids on suicide watch.
For those, did you guys do kind of a review to see if those were kids that were new to the system or are they repeat?
Um, I don't know if they were new to the system last year. Most of them were repeat because they ended up getting, most of them have been now committed to the Department of Juvenile Corrections. Three out of, three out of the girls that are primarily girls, which is, well, the girls tend to at least express their trauma more easily than boys do. Boys will can tend to suppress, suppress it more where girls act it out in self harm type behaviors. And so that's exactly what we've been seeing. And to the point where one of the girls wasn't even allowed back into one of the mental hospitals here locally, which is tragic to me that the mental hospitals won't follow through with taking care of kids that have mental health issues. So, and then, and then they point fingers at the justice system because we criminalize those with mental health issues. Well, we don't have any choice because they commit crimes and there's no mental health services or they refuse to give them the mental health services because they're combative or noncompliant or whatever. And so it's a, it's, it's a very frustrating cycle that we're finding ourselves in right now. And I know this is close to Asia's heart, Kuski, and I've had lots of conversations about mental health. And so that's, that's one of those things that I was waiting for our politicians, our higher up politicians to address is like our homelessness and mental health crisis in this country is astronomical yet nobody wants to address it or even deal with it. And so I know there's lots of other issues too, but this is one that hits home for a lot of us. And somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna have to deal with it because it's only gonna get worse. That's my soapbox for the day. I'll get off of it.
So in terms of kind of a metric, though, we're seeing that a greater than 50% of the population that we had on suicide watch were also cases where the people went over to state corrections.
So I don't know if it's 50% of them, but there's, we, we have, we just recently committed three girls and those girls were all mental health cases that had been on suicide watch regularly. And we have another one that's in detention right now that's a frequent flyer. She did go to a residential program in Montana for several months until she battered staff there and other kids. She's been since back here, back in detention, and she has a hearing, a meeting Wednesday to determine whether she's gonna be, or the recommendation will be commitment to the Department of Juvenile Corrections, which it will likely be because there are no other resources for her. So.
Thank you. Then the, the next section is youth petitions. See 74 and 2024, that's down 37 from 2023. Moving to the burgundy bars there, this is talking about the.
Just to back up on youth petitions a little bit too. Some of, part of why that's down a little bit because a lot of those mental health kids, if they have minor law violations, sometimes we'll deal with those, we'll work with the prosecutor, we'll deal with those as probation violations versus a new charge. A new charge would generate a new petition. So just because petitions are down a little bit, doesn't necessarily mean that our population has been down. It's just that we have tried to be more creative so that we're not criminalizing them more because of their mental health issues. So more of the minor violations will still, or law violations will deal with probation violations. So just to clarify that.
Okay, yeah, no, perfect, Ron. Looking at the charges, you can see in 2024, there were 19 felony charges. For misdemeanor, there were 134. And then status offenses, there was one in 2024. Status offenses, you know, runaway, truancy, tobacco, alcohol type charges.
Those, those type of offenses, that, that the only reason they're illegal is due to their age. So like minor possession of alcohol is a status offense where if you're over 21, it's legal. If you're under 21, it's not. So it becomes a status offense.
All right, and the next page, probation and diversion. So this is just a comparison of releases and intakes and the success rate of each program. So you can see in 2024, there were 69 releases and 78 probation intakes. Diversion, there was 24 releases and 24 intakes. Probation success rate, 96% for 2024. And then diversion success rate, 92%.
So is a probation intake because they violated probation or because you're simply adding them to the probation?
Yes, adding them to the, to the caseload. Yep.
Those would be new cases coming in.
The next slide, this talks about the intake.
I, I think it's worth commenting that your success rate has been above 90%. I mean, year two, because we've, we've improved that since 2022 and it's kind of stayed steady at that. So that, I think, is recognition of the staff and implementation of the, that, that understanding of your population. So I wanted to pause on that one.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean, I mean, the way that we have to measure it, at least with our numbers is, so if a kid gets on probation, he might have a violation. Doesn't mean that he's perfect on probation, but they still have that opportunity. They might have a PV, they might have to do a couple of days in jail or something, have some kind of consequence. But in the end, they're released from probation successfully.
Right, right. Usually the flip side of that would be somebody that just serves out all their time. That would be a failure on.
Yeah.
I mean, so yeah, nobody's, nobody's perfect. I do want to take just a second because I know Ron and Brian are new to kind of explain our diversion program in, in Bonner County. So we, we have a kind of a unique diversion. They're called Youth Accountability Board, and they're all volunteers. So our Youth Accountability Board or diversion program costs Bonner County zero dollars in tax dollars. We have people that are retired superintendents of schools. We have a retired psychology professor from the University of Arizona. We have a pretty broad spectrum of folks that volunteer their time to do this. And, and it's just, I just want to give them a shout out because it's critical that they do this work. And they take on quite a few kids. You can see they took in 24 kids this last year that otherwise would have ended up on probation, taking up more time, more resources, but they were able to bring them through at, at no cost to the taxpayers. The flip side of that, Cooney County has a whole department called diversion that are all paid employees with support staff and the whole nine yards. So they're, they're a real asset to, to the county.
So what is it that the diversion does?
So they work with low level offenders. So like those younger kids that are in Super One and they steal some candy bars, they deal with those type of cases. We have expanded them a little bit. They do take on some of the younger kids that have marijuana charges. But they're tested throughout the process and to make sure that they're staying clean. There's some early intervention prevention drug classes that they have to take through third millennium classrooms, which is a very good virtual classroom that has lots of different classes, actually, not just marijuana, but alcohol and tobacco and multiple classes that they can take.
And they stay outside of the facility?
They never, they stay outside, they never even see the judge as long as they complete it. And the real, the real nice thing about it is, is we call it a prepetition diversion. So there's no actual charges filed into the court system. So if they complete it, it just goes away. So there's never, there's not even a record of it, other than we maintain a record because you only get to do it one time. But as far as like doing, if you apply for a job, they do a criminal background search. It will not appear anywhere because it never gets filed.
Okay.
So, which is a real bonus.
Yep. All right, the next page is intake. So this is just giving an overview of the area's average youth offender. You can see for Bonner County, it's the ages between 14 and 16 year olds. Their race is generally white. And that 14 to 16 year range, I mean, that's pretty typical for across the state as far as kids getting in trouble. At that intake, when they're placed on probation, they're between 14 and 16 years old. You can see age at point of intake, 56% 14 to 16, 16%, 11 to 13, 26% for 17 year olds, and then 18 and under 2%. Just wanted to highlight the, the 11 to 13 year old range. We're seeing, especially I think in District One and Two and across the state as well, there's, kids are getting in trouble at a younger age. So that 11 to 13 range used to not be, used to not be a whole lot of kids like that, but we're seeing younger kids.
Younger and younger all the time.
Yeah.
And more serious crimes go to younger ones.
Yeah. Kids are, kids are pretty brazen nowadays. I mean, even the kids that don't get in trouble, stuff that they pull out at school as far as like the disrespect of principals or SROs.
Subordination.
Yeah.
Do you have an opinion on why that is or is that proper to ask?
Well, I, I have some, I have a lot of opinions, Ron, you know that. Kind of like you, we all have lots of opinions. So I, I think social media plays a big role in that. I mean, kids are constantly connected to their phone. I know the school district has recently put in some, implemented some rules to minimize the use of their cell phones during school. But parents really need to unplug their kids because the influence that social media has is, is not good. And there's a really good book and there's a workshop, I think it's tonight at the high school for parents. But the book is called The Anxious Generation by Dr. I think it's HAIHT, H-A-I-G-H-T. That talks specifically about the, the negative impact that social media is playing on our children and their mental health. But I think the workshop is tonight at the high school. There, there's daycare available and free dinner. So folks should get out and, and educate themselves on what social media is really doing to our kids.
Ever know what time that is?
I don't, but I can, I can find out and I can email you guys if you want to put it out.
I'll say it's six o'clock, but I'll send you.
It might be, and it may be on our Facebook site too. I think we put that flyer on there so I can, like, when we get done, I can double check on my.
Getting schools to, to show that because Becky, Dr. Myers is doing a thing on trying to get more schools to show the impact of social media on students and just development in general.
Ron, do you guys, are you aware of any correlations that you have of level of parent involvement with the youth or lack thereof that the youth could end up in this situation?
Yeah, there's, there's a huge correlation on their success on probation as well as success in life. The more involved the parent is, the better they're gonna do, the less they're gonna be on their social media. Yeah, I don't have specific numbers, but just in my experience, when we get a kid that comes in at the intake process and they have involved parents that are, you know, holding them accountable, there's consequences that are appropriate when they make mistakes. Still giving them the ability to earn trust and still be a kid, then those kids are usually do really well on probation. Those parents that are nonexistent, we never hear from them, we're the ones tracking them down. Their kids are generally in and out of detention pretty regularly.
So similar to the trends that I hear from school districts.
Yeah, very similar.
And one of the things that Ron points out is that all of the people that come through his door needs that person that they feel accountable to, that they have to make the change from, and the lack of in-home impacts the, the outcome.
You gotta have somebody in your life you don't want to disappoint. And I think we've all had teachers, our own parents, those kind of people. But some of these kids don't have anybody that they don't, they don't care whether they disappoint everybody in the world because everybody's disappointed them up to that point. And so they gotta get that one trusted adult, at least one. If you have one, they got a chance. It's one of those resiliency factors that, that we talk about when we talk about the ACE score. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. I know Asia's familiar with the ACES. It's the Adverse Childhood Experiences Survey, and it's, and it just, we, we do it with every kid that comes in and it just, it has a list of things of adverse experiences like being sexually abused, parent incarcerated, physical abuse, all those kind of things. But to counteract that, there's a whole list of resiliency factors that can help to counteract that. Even though these horrible things have happened to you, if you, if you use these resiliency factors, you can still. resiliency factors, you can still be successful. Granted, horrible things happen to everybody. We've all had, not great things happen to us as we've grown up and as adults, but we have those factors that we can rely on. Trusted people is is one of the major ones. So anyway, sorry, I told you I wouldn't get on my soapbox again, but I did anyway.
Good information.
And then just gender at point of intake, you can see sixty one percent male, thirty nine percent female. That's that that number is is rising statewide as well. And I think our Ron's Department has seen, you know, more females being placed on probation.
Yes. Well, in detention, we've had lots of times this year where our population has been more female than male, which has not been the case historically.
That's what I was going to ask you because we trended that way for the last few years. Are we seeing a potential need to address the accommodation of the gender population?
No, not currently. We're in pretty good shape because the way we're set up, we have the three pods. And typically whichever, and we never have same sex in the same pod or mixed sex in the same pod. So if our female population is larger than our male population, we usually put all all the males in one pod and the females in two, or vice versa. There's always one, one or the other. But with that situation, but like I said, our girls are usually in the op cells. So sometimes that frees up a pod anyway. But yeah, we're, we not ran into that issue yet.
I just want that to be on our horizon because it's not just the mixing of genders. It's your head count. So if we start to have that head count, that's greater on one than the other. And then you get just one of the opposite gender, it can throw off your.
Well, and I'll be honest with you, we have been out of compliance several times this year just because we've been short staffed and we've been short female staff primarily. So there have been times where we've been out of compliance, which doesn't necessarily harvest in any way. We just have to document that. And we, when we have our pre audit that's coming up at the end of August, we just have to show why we were out of compliance and.
And how you've been dealing with potential risks.
Yeah.
How does your general capacity in the facility tend to track?
In terms of.
Your, your.
Population wise.
Population capacity versus your intake.
So we've, so we've been fine as far as ratio of staff to inmates where the facility, when we built it, we did a study. I wasn't the director then, but the the director at that time had a population study done. And so we built the facility larger than what we needed at the time. And it's still larger than what we need now. It actually has twenty seven beds. But at our current staffing ratio, we really, our capacity is sixteen.
Okay.
So so we're not staffed to fill, to have twenty seven kids, we're staffed to have sixteen kids.
Staffing is a limiting factor at this time.
Right, right. And so, but but it hasn't been an issue to this point. There have been a few times that we've been over sixteen, but then then it's not that difficult to bring in an extra bodies, pay them a little overtime. And that way it keeps us within our ratio. So I'm always more concerned about keeping our ratio of staff to youth versus always having a male, female. I mean, I want to have that happen ideally every day, but there's just some days that this doesn't happen.
All right. Looking at the next page. So it says September thirtieth snapshot. So this is a one day snapshot of youth on probation diversion and an ID J C custody on the same day over the past three years. So we just take a snapshot on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, just to kind of take a look at what's going on in in Ron's departments. So you can see in twenty twenty four, there he had a hundred and thirty three kids on probation on that day, had three kids on diversion on that day, and then had three kids committed to the state on that day. I think Ron currently has five committed to the state.
Yeah, we just transported one kid down yesterday.
Yeah.
Down to Lewiston to start the O and A process.
Yeah. And one thing that, so we're up, our census is up as far as like kids committed statewide. It's up to a hundred and seventy eight today, which last year at this time it was in the low one forties. So there's been, over the past probably five months, there's been, we've been pretty busy as far as kids getting committed. But I think all, Ron's department does a great job that everybody in District one and two, all the departments do a good job of only committing the kids that absolutely need to be committed. Like Ron's department does a good job of keeping kids in the community and trying to serve them in the community rather than committing them. I mean.
And I still argue time and time again about we're committing, we're committing kids to the Department of Juvenile Corrections that really should be in mental health facilities and not in the correction system. But there is no other place to put them other than the correction system. And so every meeting I make that, I get on my soapbox again and talk about how inappropriate it is to be committing these kids to a correctional facility when their primary issue is mental health issues. But.
So is the process that they've had an evaluation, believe, mental health.
Have a diagnosis.
Is the right approach, but then there's no facility that'll accept them.
Yeah, well, either, either that or, I mean, we just, we just had two girls come backwards. So we're getting kids into residential, mental health residential programs, but they're all blown out. Or they come back and they commit crimes again. And and there's just no follow through with the mental health system. I mean, like when a kid comes out of juvenile corrections, there's a lot of, there's a lot of follow up with that. There's still a probation officer, D J C still has a juvenile juvenile services coordinator that's kind of following up to make sure that they're still doing their case plan or they're following their conditions. But with the mental health, they go, they go to the facility and then they're released and there's nothing. So.
Accountability support.
No, they send them out with a case plan, basically saying, okay, you need to go do this. And I get part of it, it's got to be voluntary because where the, you know, the court can order things where the mental health system can't order you to do anything. They can suggest, hey, this is, you should probably do this. But so.
Is that by statute or something?
Yeah, there is no statute that says that unless it's unless they're on probation, then the court can order you specifically to, you need to, you know, go to counseling, you need to do whatever, whatever the case plan would say that you need to do. But if you're just purely a mental health person, there's, there's no.
You're done, you check out.
You hopefully have a supportive family that helps you get through it. Otherwise, you're just.
It's healthcare and it's so the patient's rights, but against the system.
Yep.
And then just looking at the community service hours, there are eleven hundred and forty community service hours completed and seven thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars was paid directly to the victims as far as restitution. That next blue graph there, blue bar, talks about a percentage of youth who recidivated at the six, twelve and twenty four months. You can see nine percent at the six month mark, eleven percent at twelve, and seventeen percent at twenty four. Those numbers are are really good. I mean, if you, they're pretty consistent as far as statewide. But if you compare like Idaho's recidivism, recidivism numbers, like nationally, we we do really well. Our probation department's doing, specifically Ron's. So that just means, you know, a kid getting adjudicated or convicted of a new crime at that six month mark, twelve month mark or twenty four month mark.
So the community service, what are some examples of the types of community service are you?
Okay. So so we actually have a community service officer. That's one of our positions. And so every, depending on the time of year, if it's, if it's school time, they do it on Saturdays and they meet at our office, meet with our community service guy, and then he takes them out and works on projects. Usually there, we do a lot of work at the animal shelter in senior centers. We help out a lot of elderly that can't afford to have somebody come in and shovel their their walks and mow their yards and those kind of things. So we can do it at basically any place that's non, a nonprofit place or or elderly or disabled folks that don't have funds to pay to have somebody come and do it. But those are a big part of what we do. And they also take care of all of our grounds. Like they mow our yards and all that stuff around the facility, shovel and shovel snow. And then that way we don't have to hire out somebody to come and take care of all of our yard work stuff. So.
So then the coordinator for that program has contacts in the community.
Yep. Yep. And we get calls a lot of times, too, because word's out today, we can help out as long as we meet certain criteria. Yeah.
Do you know if we have a collaboration going on with Veteran Services?
You know, we have, I have talked to, I haven't really talked to the new guys that's in there, but I know Brian and I used to work together quite a bit to try to coordinate, not necessarily that, but also because we do the adult misdemeanor probation there. And a lot of those guys are veterans to make sure that they're in connection with Brian so that they're maximizing their, you know, their sort of their, the things that they're entitled to from.
Yeah, I was just wondering, kind of from the maybe disabled men or retirement age veterans, if there might be that part of our community.
We have talked about that. I don't know. I don't know how many of those folks we actually ended up working with and helping out. So right now, our, our community service officer is actually deployed. So he's supposed to be back in, I think, the first part of June. So it's been a little hit and miss with getting some of it done this year just because he's been gone since October. So left us a little, little short on that end, too. Which is good. Which I mean, he's got to do his military service for sure.
And then the last page, it talks about state funds. So this is just talking about the funds received from legislature, funds spent on juvenile treatment in the community and the percentage of the juvenile justice budget, these state funds make up. So in that, those burgundy bars there, that's the legislative pass through funds that is passed directly to Ron's department. So sixty six thousand three hundred and four was passed, passed down through the Juvenile Corrections Act. One hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty three was passed down through the tobacco and cigarette tax. And then twenty thousand two hundred and eighty one was passed down through lottery. And the lottery number is one that can fluctuate. It's all based on winnings. So some counties get pretty lucky some years and they get a big old lump sum, but.
Yeah, we got a pretty good chunk of change in ours right now. In fact, I'm going to before you guys tomorrow to talk about some anticipated revenue that we have in those accounts. And then I'll be in front of you next week to show you how we're going to spend it.
Well, I would like to win the lottery to help you out.
I know. I volunteer every year, every year. I say, I'll take one for the team, but it hasn't happened yet.
I'm sacrificing.
You need a Willy Wonka moment, right?
Golden ticket. Then the next, the blue graph there, this, this talks about the state behavioral health funds spent on juvenile treatment in the community. So that's SUDS expenditures. That's money that Ron's staff can can apply for that the state pays for substance use treatment. So you can see there was thirty two thousand five hundred and forty spent last year with seventeen youth served. And then the next one, it says C-Bass expenditures. So that's community based alternative services. So that's like mental health treatment and stuff like that. That's what that money is is for.
And the reason we haven't utilized that is because we have all this other, the money in the tobacco tax and the J C A that we can use. So if we, we're not asking to have other money when we have excess money already that we have, that we can utilize. So we just haven't really utilized the C-Bass because we haven't really needed to. We have in in past years when we didn't have as much in the other accounts, but.
And then the juvenile justice budget, percentage of the state funding. So fourteen percent of those passed down funds make up Ron's budget. And that is it. You guys probably already know, but you guys are lucky to have Ron in his department at Bonner County.
Thanks, J D.
Well, and I'm not just.
Checks in the mail.
He doesn't, yeah, he had, he didn't pay him or anything, but Ron's department's well respected. And they do a great job. So.
This is a pitch for no retirement. What did you think he was doing?
No, no, not retiring yet.
I know. He said you're going to ten more years.
You keep mentioning that every once in a while.
Ten more years.
It's getting closer, Brian.
I know, but that's what I was.
Twitch you're gonna cause with.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. He's here to pitch for no retirement.
Oh, no retirement. No, no, I have, kind of in response to your question that you emailed me back from my time off thing, I have good folks that are behind me that can, in my absence, will do a marvelous job.
Yeah, losing Ron will be tough.
It's not what he said.
Ron has done a good job of cultivating his.
What did he blink the Q's to him? You went too far. All right. Anything else from the board on the update?
Thank you, guys.
Good information. Yeah, it's always a little bit sad to have to consider, but it's great to hear that we're serving those youth who are at risk. We're best to our capacity.
That's, that's what we try to do every day.
All right. Are we ready? All right. It is eleven oh three and this meeting is adjourned.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
We'll do it again next year.
Yeah. So that means Ron's gonna be here another year at this time.
Oh, yeah. I still got a little time to go.
He said about five or six more.
No, no.
That's what he said.
No, no.
That's what I heard.
My Percy account tells me I have like thirty three months.
The experience I saw is you could retire.
We have to wrap it up to a whole year. Sorry.
We'll see. Well, we'll see like an afforded retirement.
Yes.
You can put it in some back.
You want that back. Now, why would I want to do that?
Not examples of his.
I don't know.
I know, but when I retire, I want to come back to work. I'm retired.
What did your wife say?
My wife is going to retire at the same time. She works for.
Yes, she will. But then will she actually want you there for?
I'm still learning it to be.
That, no, that's a different question.
That's a different question. So we'll take you back in thirty minutes, right?
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna see if I could quick on what time that thing starts in the high school. Because if I go back to the office, I'll, I'll never look.
Dad, my friend came through all the interviews at your place in retirement.
Which one was your friend again?
Crystal.
Oh, yeah, Crystal. Yeah, she started last week, last Monday.
She's great. I love her.
Yeah, no, she's, she's.
She's got a great personality.
I like her, I like her energy a lot.
Yes.
So anyway, back to your question on this, Will, I always check with Will and Devin. Devin's the detention manager and Will's the assistant. So we always make sure that we're going to be.
I trusted that mostly case. Be very thorough and professional, but I just.
Yeah, absolutely.
Need to ask the question. When it's just a whole single day thing, to me, it's kind of like.
Right.
I have a level of confidence with that personality, but when it turns into a multi, it's like, I should just ask the question. So.
Always ask.
Always. You know, it's not because someone would do it intentionally, but it's just.